I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Boone County Board of Education for September 14, 2023. Please let the record reflect that all board members are present. And would you please stand as we welcome Boone County High School for our National Anthem? And then our students from... What? Do we have a video of them? I am not singing the National Anthem. Do we have any vocalists in the room? Well then, we'll just move right on to our wonderful students from New Haven Elementary School who will lead us in our pledge. We've got a big stat. Well, at least they're facing it. Anytime, kids, take it away. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hang out there for a minute, kids. Mr. Parks has a certificate for you. You may be seated. Thank you. Let's give our New Haven students another round of appreciation. Thank you, Mrs. Goble in New Haven. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Mr. Turner, for our good news items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. September's Break the Mold Award winner is English language teacher Lisa Peters of Ockerman Elementary School. Mrs. Peters has been teaching the English language to our students for nine years. She's recognized by her peer English language teachers for the barriers that she has broken down with kindness and with compassion. She believes that student strength comes from their family support, so she finds a way to engage her students' families in the educational process. Please watch this video.
Lisa Peters is an English learner teacher. She prepares immigrant students at the third and fourth grade level to speak English as quickly and proficiently as possible. Theoretically, a student who communicates well will excel in academics, can feel comfortable in participating in social activities, and school sports.
You imagine coming to a new country, and you don't speak the language. The culture is completely different, and you can feel lost and you can feel lonely. And so, an EL teacher really, first of all, is really built on relationships because you are helping them to be comfortable in this new space.
She said, "Really well, teacher." When I come here my first day, I was knowing too much, and now I can talk really well.
I just love the kids. They are the sweetest, sweetest children. A lot of times, especially the ones who come from other countries, they're extremely motivated to learn, very respectful generally, and the families as well, very appreciative. So, it's just a lot of love in my job.
When I started under school, she helped me with English, and she was really patient.
An EL teacher's job doesn't just end with the day's English lesson. The student's family is also in need of educational and cultural supports because they're now living in a very different culture than their own.
My team and I are always constantly thinking of things that we can do to kind of, especially for our new families who are maybe moving from another country, just to kind of help hold their hand a little bit, explain the American school system, explain kind of the expectations here.
Lisa is a perfect example of an advocate for all of our students. Last winter, she spent multiple days during Christmas break helping a family find housing after they were displaced, and then beyond that, helping them get all the furnishings for their housing. And she just spends hours making sure that her kids are safe and well taken care of.
Lisa and this team work phenomenally together and are just a valuable asset to Ockerman.
Mrs. Peters is part of an EL team of five at Ockerman Elementary, three EL teachers including herself, and two EL paraeducators. She's been teaching EL at Ockerman Elementary for nine years. We asked her what her job is like.
Every year is different. Every month could be different because I could get a newcomer who speaks zero English, maybe has never been in school their entire life. I could get a fifth grader who's never used a pair of scissors before, which I've had, and that changes things completely for me.
The biggest thing, asset to us though, is the connections that she makes with the EL families in our EL community.
She's also started a process where they welcome newcomer families to Ockerman, which I love. They take them for a tour through the school. They do a short presentation. They introduce them to the FRC.
Coming from Florida, where pretty much every teacher has to take some classes in those strategies, when I moved here, I found out that most teachers do not get any of that training in their teacher ed programs. So, that's something that we've tried to really do well as a district.
Mrs. Peters also recently formed a multilingual parent leadership team where immigrant parents give their feedback on what works for them and what additional needs they might have. And she started Ockerman's annual multicultural Thanksgiving.
Our first year, our principal, she cooked, I think it was like eight turkeys, and then we told families to bring a side dish from another country. So, we invited not just EL families, but all families.
She really does have a passion for relationships with students and with families, and that's what makes her so good at what she does.
Congratulations, Mrs. Peters. This is my turn to say I am proud of you.
Congratulations, Mrs. Peters, for winning the award.
Congratulations on winning Break the Mold, Lisa. You are so deserving, and we are so proud of you.
Lisa, congratulations on winning the Break the Mold for September.
Lisa, once again, I just want to congratulate you on winning Break the Mold. You are a valuable asset to Ockerman Elementary. What you do for our EL families, what you do for the staff, the training that you provide is an asset that has no words. I'm super proud to have you win this award this year. I know it's a long time coming, but once again, I just want to say thank you for everything you do for our Ockerman Elementary families, the EL students here, the EL families. You are one of a kind, and this is well deserved.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's congratulate Lisa Peters. Lisa, if you would come forward, please. And if our board members would go down to welcome her.
He's your teacher, please.
Yeah, he's my teacher, boy. There's so many faces in this room tonight who are so special to me, and I just really appreciate all of your support over here. Thank you.
Our next good news item is regarding our new transportation director. The Boone County Schools Transportation Department has a new leader. Congratulations to Nick Greer for taking over the post. Your team didn't even let me finish, Nick, and get into it there, following the retirement of Director Bob Barrick. Mr. Greer knows this job is not without its challenges and has come up with some creative ideas as we continue to search for solutions to the bus driver shortage. And we have a short video to show you now.
Following the retirement of former Director Bob Barrick, please welcome Nick Greer to the post.
I think our biggest change we need to make is just our hiring and retention. We developed a Google document that I shared with the entire staff here, and I said, "Just add any ideas that you can." No idea is too small or not good enough. I tasked our office staff to keep track of any missing students. On the first two days of school, we ended up with 53 missing students. Most of them were kindergartners. Now, all of them were found, of course. With ZPass, we even be able to identify that they scanned on the bus. My additional hope to that is to be able to look at the buses and say, "All right, we're having on average 30 students scanning on and off this bus every day. We can add more students to this route and try to eliminate some of these doubles that we have."
And Mr. Greer has another unique idea that's sure to pique your interest and maybe even challenge you, but that's a story for another day, so stay tuned.
At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Mr. Turner, for our good news items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. September's Break the Mold Award winner is English language teacher Lisa Peters of Ackerman Elementary School. Mrs. Peters has been teaching the English language to our students for nine years. She's recognized by her peer, English language teachers, for the barriers that she has broken down with kindness and with compassion. She believes that student strength comes from their family's support, so she finds a way to engage her students' families in the educational process. Please watch this video.
Lisa Peters is an English learner teacher. She prepares immigrant students at the 3rd and 4th grade level to speak English as quickly and proficiently as possible. Theoretically, a student who communicates well will excel in academics, can feel comfortable in participating in social activities, and school sports.
You imagine coming to a new country and you don't speak the language, the culture is completely different, and it's, you can feel lost and you can feel lonely. And so, an EL teacher really, first of all, is really built on relationships because you are helping them to be comfortable in this new space.
She said, "Really well, teacher. When I come here, my first day, I was knowing too much, and now I can talk really well."
I just love the kids. They're the sweetest, sweetest children. A lot of times, especially the ones who come from other countries, they're extremely motivated to learn, very respectful generally, and the families as well, very appreciative. So, it's just a lot of love in my job.
When I started on the school, she had English, and she was really patient.
An EL teacher's job doesn't just end with the day's English lesson. The student's family is also in need of educational and cultural supports because they're now living in a very different culture than their own.
My team and I are always constantly thinking of things that we can do to kind of, especially for our new families who are maybe moving from another country, just to kind of help hold their hand a little bit, explain the American school system, explain kind of the expectations here.
Lisa is a perfect example of an advocate for all of our students. Last winter, she spent multiple days during Christmas break helping a family find housing after they were displaced, and then beyond that, helping them get all the furnishings for their housing, and she just spends hours making sure that her kids are safe and well taken care of.
Lisa and this team work phenomenally together and are just a valuable asset to Ackerman.
Mrs. Peters is part of an EL team of five at Ackerman Elementary, three EL teachers including herself, and two EL paraeducators. She's been teaching EL at Ackerman Elementary for nine years. We asked her what her job is like.
Every year is different. Every month could be different because I could get a newcomer who speaks zero English, maybe has never been in school their entire life. I could get a 5th grader who's never used a pair of scissors before, which I've had, and that changes things completely for me.
The biggest thing, asset to us, though, is the connections that she makes with the EL families and our EL community.
She's also started a process where they welcome newcomer families to Ackerman, which I love. They take them for a tour through the school, they do a short presentation, they introduce them to the FRC.
Coming from Florida, where pretty much every teacher has to take some classes in those strategies, when I moved here, I found out that most teachers do not get any of that training in their teacher ed programs. So, that's something that we've tried to really do well as a district.
Mrs. Peters also recently formed a multilingual parent leadership team where immigrant parents give their feedback on what works for them and what additional needs they might have, and she started Ackerman's annual multicultural Thanksgiving.
Our first year, our principal, she cooked, I think it was like eight turkeys, and then we told families to bring a side dish from another country. So, we invited not just EL families, but all families.
She really does have a passion for relationships with students and with families, and that's what makes her so good at what she does.
Congratulations, Mrs. Peters. This is my turn to say, "I am proud of you."
Congratulations, Mrs. Peters, for winning the award.
Congratulations on winning Break the Mold, Lisa. You are so deserving, and we are so proud of you.
Lisa, congratulations on winning the Break the Mold for September.
Lisa, once again, I just want to congratulate you on winning Break the Mold. You are a valuable asset to Ackerman Elementary. What you do for our EL families, what you do for the staff, the training that you provide is an asset that is, has no words. I'm super proud to have you win this award this year. I know it's a long time coming, but once again, I just want to say thank you for everything you do for our Ackerman Elementary families, the EL students here, the EL families. You are one of a kind, and this is well deserved.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's congratulate Lisa Peters. Lisa, if you would come forward, please. And if our board members would go down to welcome her. Our next good news item is regarding our new transportation director. The Boone County Schools Transportation Department has a new leader. Congratulations to Nick Greer for taking over the post. Your team didn't even let me finish, Nick, and get into it there, following the retirement of Director Bob Barrick. Mr. Greer knows this job is not without its challenges and has come up with some creative ideas as we continue to search for solutions to the bus driver shortage, and we have a short video to show you now.
Following the retirement of former Director Bob Barrick, please welcome Nick Greer to the post.
I think our biggest change we need to make is just our hiring and retention. We developed a Google document that I shared with the entire staff here, and I said, "Just add any ideas that you can." No idea is too small or, you know, not good enough. I tasked our office staff to keep track of any missing students. On the first two days of school, we ended up with 53 missing students. Most of them were kindergartners. Now, all of them were found, of course. With ZPass, we even be able to identify that they scanned on the bus. My additional hope to that is to be able to look at the buses and say, "All right, we're having on average 30 students scanning on and off this bus every day. We can add more students to this route and try to eliminate some of these doubles that we have."
And Mr. Greer has another unique idea that's sure to pique your interest and maybe even challenge you, but that's a story for another day, so stay tuned.
We have a few other people that we want to congratulate. We're going to congratulate the following exceptional Boone County District educators and administrators. First, Superintendent Matthew Turner, who made the special edition of Cincy Magazine's Power 100 in the education section. This edition showcases the pinnacle of the tri-state's leadership, encompassing innovative education and executive and influential figures across diverse industries, as well as the upcoming leaders of tomorrow. Mr. Turner, congratulations to you. We are also congratulating Tasha Lovins of Ryle High School and Sarah Kendall of Ackerman Middle School. Both teachers were celebrated for the Campbellsville Excellence in Teaching Awards. The purpose of the program is to recognize the quality teaching and learning taking place in the school systems throughout Kentucky. The awards program, Campbell University presents certificates to teachers in each grade level, preschool, elementary, middle, and high, as selected by their school district. So, if Tasha and Sarah could come on, please.
Oh, you'll be behind it, don't worry. They won't see you. Just smile, that's all you gotta do, and you'll be fine. This page. Which will be what? There you go, preschool thing? The local area agreement? Local area agreement, full utilization of preschool? Okay.
Okay, we'll move on now with our meeting agenda for our Student Board Member Representative Report. Yussa?
Hello, and welcome. My pleasure to welcome everybody to this new board meeting of the school year. I'd like to say that this school year has started off really strongly for myself and many of my peers. I felt like it's been a very smooth transition from the summer to the school year, and I cannot thank the administration of my school and all the schools in this county for making it the smoothest way possible to get back into the learning process. It's been a very fun, very easy way to get back into the flow of things. I've talked to many of my peers, as it is my responsibility to be their voice, and they've said that they've also enjoyed how every time this district does a great job of making the transition to school a much easier and better process, and I cannot be more appreciative for those who do make that possible. One concern that has been brought up by many of my peers is the problem with buses currently. As many of you may well know, many people in this county experience double or triple runs, or they may be late to school, and it's my responsibility to voice those problems and make sure they are heard here in front of this board and to all of you, and so I hope that we can collaborate and figure out new innovative solutions to these issues, which I assume will be addressed shortly through this board meeting. The Superintendent Student Advisory Council has also met in August, near the end of August, and we, it was our first meeting for the new school year. We had a lot of new and enthusiastic members to this council, and we all went over expectations for those who are selected to be on the Superintendent Advisory Council, and we began the process of learning to know each other and making connections so we can more strongly make impacts in this county as we have done through the previous years. The High School Committee on the SSAC has also gone together to discuss future ideas and events that we have planned. We are planning on attending Kiska, or the Kentucky School Council Association event that will be hosted in NKU in October, and hopefully, we, our voices here at Boone County as a whole can be heard more clearly throughout the state of Kentucky. We are also aiming to make SSAC a more public thing to make sure that people everywhere know that we are doing good work in putting impactful decisions into this county as the students have the voice. They are the root of why education occurs, and we want this to be known to everyone. Thank you all so much for hearing, and I promise to give you all future events and keep everyone updated. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move ahead with our Superintendent's Report, we did have a late business item submitted to the board today that we do need to amend our agenda and add it as a new business item because of the date requirement of board approval. So, if I could, and if someone would put forward and motion to amend the agenda to add New Business Item D, the memorandum with Head Start in Boone County Preschool, I would appreciate that.
Motion to add Item D to the agenda, what is it, Item D?
Item D under New Business.
Consider the Head Start.
Okay, so I have a motion to amend, to add Item D under New Business for Head Start in Preschool. Do I have a second? Second, Mrs. Young, thank you. Are there any questions? Did everyone see the information that came out late this afternoon? Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Just note, your recommended action, New Business, now has an Item D, and we'll discuss that once we get there. Thank you for taking care of that housekeeping item of business. We'll move forward now with our Superintendent's Report. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to introduce Eric McCarter, our Deputy Superintendent for Operations, to give a report on the Operations Division of our school district.
I want to highlight a couple of things. One, being with our schools. I highlight one of our schools, and the way they're using their layback funds that were provided to us by the state. I'm going to show you a few pictures. The school I'm highlighting tonight is Ryle High School, and some of the programs that are going with Project Lead the Way programs. So, Chad, if you will bring those up. What you see before you is the Family Consumer Science Room, and the culinary practices that will be used in that room, and how that is all put together. Keep going, Chad, please. And then the biomedical room, and I will not be able to pronounce this correctly, in a table, that a student, a classroom, and how it works, and the uniqueness of it, and being able to see the skeletal and circulatory system of the body, and how that can be used as a teaching tool. It was very neat and taught the best student, and the teacher, and the class that I was in that day. Then the other one is the engineering room, that has a seat, that would be correct, a seat in the seat machine for cutting of wooden metal, and then the printers that are over there to the left, and then the equipment there in the back of the room, being able to do multiple, multiple different projects throughout the day. I wanted to highlight that because part of our facility department was vital in helping put these rooms together, because we had to refurbish those rooms, and our guys are very talented, and I wanted to thank Mr. Razor and his team for helping these classrooms be put together the way they are, and see the kids in the costumes and how they're utilizing the materials that they have. Again, provided it's money from the state, it's really saying, "Do you have time to get through or to get to one of the schools?" Our other high schools are doing the same thing, and it happens to be on Ryle's campus to be able to take these pictures. I think we'd be working time to do that, too. I just want to highlight that and show the pictures to you.
Mr. McCarter, just one comment on that. Those are project lead the way pathways that are in all of our high schools are extremely useful for our students in getting into fields that they wish to get into in terms of medicine, in terms of engineering. We've had executives from St. Elizabeth and other local businesses and industries say they'll take any and all of our students that go through those pathways because of just the high level of training they receive.
Thank you. And then, going on to our construction update, showing you pictures throughout the whole summer of the construction process. So, you're thinking of a different idea, what can we show them that would be a little different? We wanted to show you a finished product.
With kids actually in the rooms and utilizing it, so I'll turn it over to Kim.
Thank you. So, again, very similar to what you saw with Ryle High School, the Family Consumer Science Rooms at Boone County High School, so similar project with their layback funds, and also a very strong collaboration with Mr. Razor's department. So, one of the really neat things about this, you'll notice that those have stainless steel countertops. So, one of the tasks that Mr. Razor's amazing workmanship persons in his department, where they had to build a base cabinet, or a base countertop first, and then we sent those out to have the stainless steel fabricated. And as Mr. McCarter said, I encourage you to stop by and visit them. It is so impressive to see the transformation in those Family Consumer Science Rooms, and the ones who, on the far end, you can see some students. I was actually there during a classroom one day. I hung out for a while, hoping they would make their way back into the actual culinary section, but they did not, but they were doing some great things there, and it's really exciting for them to have that space. This is some pictures of Jones Middle School, so Mrs. Park, it was great to share some pictures of actual students and some of their new spaces there. So, you can see that's the new addition. One of the biggest transformations in that area, aside from additional instructional space, is just the lighting, and what a difference, having that bright light, it completely changes the feeling in those instructional spaces. And then, these pictures, you'll see lots of collaboration going on in their classrooms, so several of their new classrooms have the movable wall, so you can see one of the pictures where the wall is open, so they have two classrooms collaborating and having instruction at the same time in one very large space. So, it was great to be able to see those students actually in those classrooms. They do have new furniture coming, so you'll notice that they do have some temporary tables in there, so we are anticipating that new furniture to be arrived, arriving soon, and then you'll see yet another transformation in those classrooms. I think that's the last one.
All right, moving right along, wanted to give you a little bit of a transportation update. Again, I wanted to welcome Nick to being our new transportation director, and I can't wait to hear what the next idea is that you had in your video.
I thought of it, yeah.
We just can't wait to talk to you tomorrow. So, with Nick being our director, that he was our assistant director, so that leaves the assistant director open currently, and we are in the process of getting that person hired, and that process is going to be by camp.
And then, I also wanted to thank our bus drivers for all their work for the first month of school and getting kids to and from school every day under some difficult situations. They're an amazing group of people. A lot of them were here tonight to support Nick, and they've already left, but I did want to thank them. And I also wanted to bring to your attention, and I think I have at one of our workshops, to answer your question about the, what we're doing in the short term for some of our double runs, some of our principals have volunteered to become bus drivers, and they are taking classes currently, and one of them, one of them being your principal, no, maybe not your principal, I'm sorry about that, one of them is going to be starting on-
Who may be thinking about it now.
Yeah, so, hold that thought. But he probably will be starting on Monday, driving, and what he is doing is trying to help with the double runs that we have at his school. So, he will finish the day out at school, and then he'll go down to the bus loop where that is, and he'll take a double run group home and come back and maybe even do another. The people that I did want to recognize that are in training that will be starting pretty shortly, Matt Schaefer, Principal Ryle, Cody Ryan, the assistant principal, Andy Gatewood, I think he is here with us, he's training, Chris Ritzy, still here, yep. I want to thank all of them for going through the class and participating in that, and we are trying to recruit a couple other principals, and I think they are thinking about it. We talked to them at our principal meeting this past week, and so they are thinking about it, and hopefully, we can get more on board. Driver openings, we still do have some driver openings as we have in the past few months, so I would encourage people to call Human Resources or the Transportation Department, and we can help you get to the training opportunities that would lead you to getting your CDL. And with that being said, I know Nick mentioned ZPass a little bit earlier, so I'm going to have Kim give a little bit of an update on that.
I actually did hear from a fifth principal today, but I don't want to share who that is yet, in case he's not actually decided, but, so, coming soon, there might be a number five coming for that. So, just a quick update on ZPass. As you know, we have been gathering the opt-out forms, so as of this time, we have 82 opt-out forms, and we did send those out to about 9,000 students, 9,000 students that were eligible at the elementary level, and then our students receiving special transportation. So, our next step in ZPass, we will be gathering the cards, the actual ID cards, and then we'll be distributing those to the students. We'll be doing a small rollout first, and gradually rolling that out to all of the other elementary schools that we can get that full on board. As Mr. Greer did say, we have had some students who we have had to locate after school, so we know that that will be a great tool to assist us with that, especially when we're looking for our smallest ones within the district. So, our intent is, as everything goes on the timeline, we will have that out and up and running by mid-October, as long as everything goes as we're expecting. We will be going out to the schools very shortly to train their office staff, to make sure that they have full understanding how everything works, and to facilitate that implementation.
And just a couple more items, wanted to give you an update on our AEDs and CPR trainings. We had our Health and Wellness Committee this past Monday, and we have 33 additional AEDs coming to the district soon, and I want to thank Kathy for her work with that, and that will be added to the 61 that we currently have throughout the district. And she is also going to be meeting with the students from Thornwild, I think, very soon, and Connor Middle, since, because some of them have moved up in the next few days that we're here to ask about the AEDs back a few months ago. And then also, Jennifer Yager reported, she is constantly training people in CPR. She's also training some of our nurses to actually be trainers themselves, so she can train people within our buildings to get more people trained in CPR, so that's a very good, positive thing. Our monthly financial report, Linda-
Assessment is a meaningful, positive, and empowering learning experience for students that yields timely, relevant, and actionable evidence. When Commissioner Glassman across the state and started doing those empathy interviews, he was finding that they were not good experiences for a lot of our students. They were not good experiences for a lot of our families. And when we did our own empathy interviews that we were required to do through this initiative, we found the same thing. So part of our job with Local Laboratories of Learning is to make sure the stakeholders who are involved with that group have their eyes on the work that we're doing with assessment to make sure it is a good experience for everyone. Number three, students receive timely differentiated support based on their individual learning needs. That's MTSS. Number four, students progress based on evidence of mastery, not seat time. About 10 years ago, we did some work with mastery learning with Tom Guskie. Many of our schools have picked that up. Connor Middle School is a great example. They've kept that going. Number five, students learn actively using different pathways and very pacing. Number six, strategies to ensure equity for all students are embedded in the culture, structure, and pedagogy of schools and education systems. And then finally, number seven, rigorous common expectations for learning are explicit, transparent, measurable, and transferable. Number six and seven, we find with our work with the opportunity myth that we've done in many of our schools. All right, so which one do you think it is? Which one do we think might be difficult for us? Anybody? Board members? Audience? Which one? It's not the highlighted one. I hear six, I hear four. How many say six? How many say four? Well, I would say it's four. And it's not the mastery part, it's the seat time part.
The students are saying six.
Students are saying six? Student voice, we'll have to talk to you. We're gonna have to talk to you about that. I want to hear about that. So from a student perspective, I do want to hear about that. I'm being serious. But if you add the not the seat time, seat time means we put into the Henry Ford way of doing things 100 years ago kindergarten, grade one, grade two, and we have followed that. And it makes sense for efficiency's sake in a district of 20,000 students. But what's efficient might not what be best for every student. So what this initiative, Local Laboratories of Learning, is allowing us to do is to work with Aurora Institute, go to the institute, take some principals, some LSS people, and really learn about how can we further our work and do we want to further our work in this area? So we're really excited to do that. Any questions? And I do want to talk to the students. So afterwards, if you're still here, I'll catch you in the back. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Detwiler. I just want to give a quick update on a few items with the board, some of my activities, and a few things going on around our school district. We do have some great things going on, and we have great people in our school district. Kevin Daly of Ballyshannon Middle School was named the Valvoline Kentucky Teacher of the Year in 2024, so congratulations goes to Kevin. He will be working very hard in that role once 2024 starts. I attended the Northern Kentucky Cooperative for Educational Services Board of Directors meeting earlier in late in August and earlier this September. That's our regional superintendent's organization. Also attended the Northern Kentucky Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting late in August and delivered information to them on the start of our school year, what was going on in Boone County, and some of the challenges facing schools with transportation and with staffing. Our district Health and Wellness Committee has met recently here on September 11th, visited the Northern Kentucky Area Technical Center. That's on the campus of Connor High School. You may know of some of the programs, some of our students spend half their day at the high school and half the day at the Area Technical Center, and that serves all four of our high schools. Our Transportation Committee met here on August 24th, Teaching and Learning met on the same day. Our board members all attended the Kentucky School Board Association Fall Regional Meeting, September 5th, at Receptions for some training and updates. Our District Budget Committee meeting met on Wednesday, the 6th. Let's see, on September 7th, we held the second meeting of our District Ambassadors Program. The Student Services Department, under Ms. Rootman and Mr. Brock there, did a great job presenting at the New Fine Arts Center at Boone County High School. One thing about that program is we try to move around to different parts of the district where so our parents from each of the schools that are part of that ambassadors program can see some of the different facilities, different places around the community. They really love that. The Student Services Team shared how they assist students, families, and schools in the areas of student attendance, discipline, school resource centers, service centers, and students' mental health needs. Just a couple more for you there. Of course, we had a special board workshop held on Wednesday, August 30th, to discuss our district organizational chart. I've had some conversations here recently with state superintendents and other state Board of Education representatives on various matters. Also had a long discussion with the Indiana Secretary of Education. Fortunately, I have a good relationship there. She's a former colleague of mine when I was a principal, and she was a teacher. Met with several different Northern Kentucky community leaders to discuss possible activities on which we could collaborate together. And also met with some student representatives on the school board to review tonight's agenda. We had that meeting over at Cooper High School with Youssef. He is, I'm really excited for his work. They had their first meeting earlier this year as well, so I'm really excited for the work of our advisory council. Also went to the Collins Elementary School Multicultural Family Night. That was a fantastic event. We had a great crowd there, lots of opportunities to meet with families, and also all the different community resources that are available to our families and to our schools. And also, just a quick note here to teachers especially, 2023-24 Boone County Ed Foundation application is on the website. Please consider for applying for a mini grant. The deadline for that is October 16th, and that will support learning in your own classroom and schools. Madam Chair, that's all of my good news. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Appreciate that. At this point, we'll move on to our audience of citizens, and as always, our little informational statement that we do welcome the opportunity to hear from our community, to take an opportunity to inform the board of your views on matters. Keep in mind that our agenda is set, and we can only discuss the items that are present on the agenda. We cannot legally, nor would the board, discuss an issue specific to an employee or student in respect to privacy, as well as any pending litigation. Our meetings are streamed live on YouTube, so keep that in mind. And if you do have a concern that you would like a response from the administration, please leave your information, contact information over here with Mr. Ball so that we can make sure you are responded to timely. We do ask that you keep your comments to two minutes so that all who wish to speak may. We do have several signed in, and we'll start with that sign-in list. Dave Payne.
I'd actually like to donate my time to Amber, please.
Okay. Absolutely. Just state your name for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Amber Hoffman. I come and speak in front of you every month. This month, I've actually reached out to you guys personally. Only one of you responded back to me. So instead of taking the time to speak to you, I'm going to take this opportunity to speak to the educators and administrators that I know are listening to this and that are currently scared of the implementation of SB 150 in Boone County school districts. So this is a guide to Kentucky Senate Bill SB 150. SB 150 does not require schools to out LGBTQ students. It actually prohibits the Kentucky Department of Education from requiring schools to keep information private from parents. It does not require the removal of pride flags or safe space stickers. It says nothing at all related to these items. It does not say that you have to ban the use of preferred pronouns. It actually says that Kentucky prohibits the Department of Education from recommending the use of preferred pronouns with trans students. It does not require students to call CPS if they feel that outing a student would put them in danger. Expressly, it says that personnel may not tell parents if they think it would endanger a child, adding that personnel who do not call parents in this case are not failing to report neglect simply by not reporting this to the parents. It does not prohibit talking about referencing LGBTQ people in the curriculum. It says that schools can instruct or present topics of gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation. All humans have gender identities, expression, and orientations. In fact, the bill expressly says that it does not prohibit all discussion with contexts of human sexuality, both the sexuality of groups and specific individuals, though the course or curriculum on human sexuality must be reviewed and allowed parents to opt out. Can I finish, or would you like me to stop?
I'm a Miss Moore because we do have several people signed in.
Two left.
Okay.
It does not ban LGBTQ affinity clubs. It does not say anything related to this at all. And it does not ban sex education. It bans sex education in K through 5 and gives parents the right to know the content of sexual curriculum and the right to opt out in 6th to 12th grade. So I hope this will clear out some misunderstandings about this law in our county for our educators. Thank you. Pardon.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Jenna Van Lanningham.
I'm also here to talk about SB 150. My name is Jenna Van Lanningham. I'm a graduate of Boone County High School and a parent of two students in Boone County schools, one of whom is gender diverse. I am here tonight because I'm a proud queer Kentuckian and because I care deeply about LGBTQ plus students and families in Boone County schools. I know you all aren't responsible for SB 150. You probably didn't really ask for what's in it, but here it is, and we have to deal with it. However, I do think the way that you all have been dealing with it goes too far and lacks transparency. Weeks ago, I asked for new or amended policies around student pronoun use to be shared and was told there weren't any. And I've asked to see the training materials that were used to train teachers and staff a few weeks ago. I've received no answer. There's also links on the website that are broken. I can't see board committee information. Additionally, our request that our child's teacher use their preferred pronouns never even received a response. It really feels as though the board, the superintendent, staff are purposefully making things unclear and confusing. I know that each of you care deeply about students, and I know that you want each student to achieve their highest potential as a learner and citizen. But having poor communication about policies and trainings that negatively affect LGBTQ plus students and families just deepens the hurt that we've already been subjected to from our elected officials in the state legislature. Tonight, I'm asking for transparency. What was the training given to staff if a student changes their name or pronouns? Are there new or amended policies or not? Should I have expected silence from my child's teacher? I ask you to please make communication on these issues priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Lanningham. If you would want to leave your information with Mr. Ball, we'll get your questions answered. Sophia Lynn Wolf.
Today, I'm going to teach you all a little lesson about gender, just in general. As you know, my name is Sophia Lynn Wolf. I am a freshman at Ignite Institute and 14 years old. You do with that information as you will. I identify as non-binary. What does that really mean? Well, there are a lot of different meanings behind it, and that really depends on the person. That can go from somebody that doesn't exactly feel connected to either one gender or another, whether that be more masculine or feminine, but it can also mean a bunch of other things, like a more common reason that has arise, especially when it comes to a female. In a way, it has been a way that a lot of females can just throw gender roles out the window. And this has been really beneficial in a lot of ways because, in a way, it's kind of like a big act of feminism. It's allowed females to get the job, get a say, get their part in something that they haven't been able to before. And this is something that I don't think a lot of people have realized, and it's way more important than, again, a lot of people realize. So with this information, oh my God, I'm sorry. So with this information, this should open a lot of eyes because it means a lot of the people that identify as something that they weren't born as, they don't always want to just change their body physically. It's more of a mental thing. It's more of a way to get out there, to get their say, get their part. And nobody really chooses this as a way to get attention because it causes a lot of difficulties as a queer kid, a lot of people don't realize. So yeah, thank you.
Sean Mall.
Are you going to reset it or make it six? I don't care. I just want to make sure I give you time. Okay. I'll wait.
So are Casey and Allison here?
Everybody is present. Hello. We are Sean and Casey Mall. Let's play a game. Do you know which of us is which? Who is Sean and who is Casey? Let me give you a hint. You're probably wrong. My name is Sean Mall. I'm a product of Boone County schools. I went to Burlington Elementary, Connor Middle, and Connor High, and I'm a mother of a current Boone County student. I'd like to speak to you today about SB 150. I understand it is currently the law, regardless of our opinions or whether we even believe it's constitutional, but I would like to discuss the emotional and physical pain that being misgendered caused me. You see, I think it goes without saying that none of us get to pick our names at birth. We get whatever name our parents give us regardless of how good or bad it is. It wasn't until I was four years old in preschool that I first heard a boy tell me, "Your name is Sean? That's a boy's name." I didn't know it was a boy's name. I had never met anybody else named Sean. And why would I think that my parents would give me a boy's name if I was a girl? But I heard it again in first grade, that Sean was a boy's name. And again in second and third. You get the idea. Is it short for Shauna? Nope, it's just Sean. Did your parents want a boy? According to them, his name would have been Edward. Throughout my life, my name has caused me nothing but problems, pain, and owe so many tears, like literally thousands of tears. Substitute teacher calls attendants. When I respond with "here," when my name is called, they scold, thinking it must be some smart aleck kid trying to be funny. In college, I had to show my student ID in order for my biology professor to accept my test because no way was Sean a female. Job interviews. Imagine the surprise from hiring managers when they expect to see a male applicant and here's this short blonde lady. Scheduling contractors for our home improvement projects. I call and set up the appointments with my name, my number. When they call me to confirm and I answer, they say, "Oh, we're sorry. We're looking for Sean?" Yeah, this is "her," with extra emphasis on the "her." Trying to withdraw money from our joint bank account. I put my name and amount on my slip, and I'm told, "Sorry, we can't accept this unless Sean is here too." At which point, I get a manager, show my ID, and advise them to educate their employees. I'm not assuming names have a gender associated with them. You see, my entire life, I have been called a boy. I hate being called a boy. I hate that people thought I was a boy. I hated that my stupid name implied that I was a boy because I don't identify as a boy, but my name does. So how does this play with SB 150? Which names are boys' names and which names are girls' names? Is there a list? Is there a gender-neutral list for names like Casey or Jesse? If I had wanted to change my boy-sounding name to a more girly-sounding name like Suzie, would that have been okay since I'm keeping a name that's associated with my birth gender? Or if someone wants to go from Suzie to Sean, how can you say that that's a boy's name when I'm standing here as proof that Sean isn't only a boy's name? Or is it only about pronouns? So if Steve wants to be called Suzie but says that he's still a he, is that okay? But if Steve wants to stay Steve but says he is a they, is the pronoun the problem even though there's no name change? Please help me make this make sense. If I were a current Boone County school student, what steps would I take and who would be notified if I wanted a more feminine-sounding name? And to which standard of names are we using? Since clearly, there can be girls named Sean and boys named Kelly. I am of Irish descent, so Sean actually translates to John. So is my name John? Would that be okay? We have over 60 different languages being spoken in Boone County schools. Which language are we using to set the bar for which are female versus male names? Is Google Translator going to be the judge in these name change requests? And you know why this sounds ridiculous? Because it is. I wish with all my heart that I had been brave enough, like the kids today, to make the change in elementary school and change my name. My name does not reflect my gender. It does not reflect who I am. It does nothing but cause me problems, frustration, anger, hurt, and tears. Why then would I wish a lifetime of hurt, which I'm telling you now is a 36-year-old misgendered-named woman, is exactly what will happen? Why would I force that onto a child? If someone identifies as a female and wants to have a feminine name? Let them. It hurts no one, but not letting them will. It is unnecessary pain we're forcing upon these kids. If they don't identify with their name, it causes them pain and tears. Why would we want that? Does this make learning easier? Does this make them more ready for college? Do sad kids have better test scores? Show me where this improves our school. I fully support the students and their right to the freedom of self-expression as a guarantee to them through the Constitution and the First Amendment. SB 150 is unconstitutional and will be struck down in court. I understand until that time, we have to play by the rules. Let's just make sure the rules are easily reversible once this law is removed. I encourage the board to use the same language as the Fayette County School Board, which I believe does as little harm as possible to the students and eases the burden on our already overworked, overstressed, underpaid teachers. Let's make sure we're supporting our students and not causing unnecessary harm or telling them to just suck it up and wait till they're 18, they can do it then. Because believe me, at that point, it's too late. Everyone is already going to call them the name that they have known them as since first grade, and their hated name is going to follow them the rest of their lives. Trust me. Thank you.
I'm Randy Stigall, 812 Valvyn Court, Hebron, Kentucky. Tonight, I want to voice my disapproval of the purchase of Panorama monitoring and display software. Since a decision is delayed, perhaps my thoughts will shape the later decision. My primary objection is SEL inclusion. I describe SEL as mind-mining of the soul, of the student and the student's family. Having such deep personal data available later by demand by colleges, employers, lenders, and the government is base-loading a Chinese social credit scoring system. I contacted a premier education researcher here in Kentucky concerning Panorama. He thought the use of Panorama to collect student academic data for use in the MTSS intervention process seemed acceptable. However, he believes that including SEL assessments is very dangerous in Panorama. To me, reviewing the SEL job that occurred at the last TNL committee meeting, SEL assessment accumulation seem more, or at least equally important, than academic assessment. SEL is dangerous, not very definitive, data that can't be calibrated, and very dependent on the worldview of the assessment survey creator. I don't think my input will completely stop this, but you might be able to remove some of the long-term dangers of its use. Since many stakeholders, including students and their parents, are allowed by the Panorama licensed to review the data, then I think a policy needs to be put in place and approved before you place the order. Points of the policy should include: What are accessibility requirements and procedures for each stakeholder? Student, parent, teacher, principal, all the levels of MTS interventions, the court even. What's the process for data correction if the student or parents believe the data is incorrect or biased? What's the limits of transmitting the data to subsequent K through 12 schools in and out of the district, private charter or parochial schools? Transmitting data to subsequent teachers and interventionists tends to bias those people against the struggling student. How will damaging history be expunged when they change and mature? Most important, the policy must require Panorama to destroy, as outlined in the license agreement, all accumulated assessments except academic when a student leaves the district for any reason, graduation, dropout, or attend another K through 12 school. If you won't kill this, then driving it, then, excuse me, then giving it a limited viable lifespan where students' lives are not damaged long-term is the second-best thing you can
Karen Ellis.
I'm Karen Ellis. I've been with Kentucky schools for 32 years, been with Boone County for 28 years as an assistant for special needs. I'm coming to you tonight about the second assistant director. My reasoning, I feel that we can utilize this money somewhere else. I'm against the second director. I feel that we can utilize money somewhere else. We have a shortage on aides. We have a shortage on drivers that we need to utilize that money and to hire some new ones and to train them properly. I'll give you an example. I was off on a PM run one day. They put an aide on that bus who was not trained properly on how to handle special needs. Again, I love my job. I'm not putting my job down. I'm not putting my students down, but I have students who will kick, hit, spit, seizures. They need special attentions. We can't just put someone on a bus who's not been trained. My driver had to get up out of his seat to go take care of the student on that bus, which at that time, I feel that the driver should be in her seat, watching uncommon traffic, watching the surroundings. If I have an aide that's not properly trained, we need to be training them, and I feel that hiring a second assistant director at this time is not acceptable, in my opinion. We need to utilize that money somewhere else for our students and for our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Joetta Prost.
I'm Dr. Joetta Pro. I live in Hebron, about a block and a half from Thornwild Elementary School, and walk by there every day with my two dogs. I am a retired, mostly retired psychologist. I moved to Northern Kentucky, to Boone County, about eight years ago, and my wife and I moved here because we wanted to be near family. And I've only come to one other school board meeting, but I come today about SB 150. In Georgia, where I lived before, I was the Director of Policy for the State Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. And before that, I was the Training Director. So I come to you to say, I know you didn't ask for SB 150. I hope in your hearts that most of you believe that it's wrong. I think you've heard from some other people about the harm that the bill can do. I think what concerns me is that what I've heard on the street is that the policies are not clear for Boone County and that the training may not have been clear for what is actually required by SB 150. And I want to say to you that, in my heart, I believe policies are an anchor that help people to do the right thing. You have the choice to write policies that either go with the very minimum that that terrible bill requires, or you have the right and the authority to write policies that go beyond that bill's minimum requirements that my friend Amber kind of clearly outlined. I urge you to think about policies that demonstrate respect and not restriction and that are not harmful to LGBTQ children and their families because they all have families who care about them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Prost. Okay, that is everyone that has...
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I would like to interject something if I could.
Okay.
Okay, because I'd just like to take liberty here because I can testify that there are strong allies and LGBTQ community members within Boone County schools, and they have been working on this with a deep level of And they have been working on this with a deep level of care and concern for all of our kids. And I'm saying this as a parent of a non-binary student, not just as a board member. But being a board member, I do get a front-row seat to many things happening behind the scenes. And I promise you that when it comes to our kids, all does mean all in our district. And the district leaders are doing all that they can to minimize the stress and the confusion that's been put on the students and the educators. The issues discussed here today, they are important for those in our district to understand, because it's not as simple as many try to make it seem. The legislation passed was not as clear-cut as many like to make it think, and the reach of it, especially when it comes to curriculum, is deep. And the confusion and misinformation that has spread has caused an uphill battle over the last couple of weeks for some of our strongest advocates. And it's been hard enough dealing with the reality of the legislation alone versus the stuff that's been completely exaggerated. So this has just not been a very easy thing for people in our school district to navigate. I want to specifically give a big thank you to Dr. Detweiler and the LSS team. They have been working diligently on how to best educate teachers and to roll out this legislation while keeping our at-risk kids as safe as possible. And I want to thank Mr. Reed with the BCEA for all the work that they've been doing with the teachers to help provide a voice for those educators, because they're terrified right now. They're terrified to speak up because of a political climate that have them in fear. They're afraid that their safety will be put at risk for themselves and their families if they speak out about anything that they see in SB 150. And this is reflective of the sad state of our society, because our teachers, they cannot speak their mind to their district leadership. They feel fear. And that speaks volumes. And we need to do a better job of providing a safe space for these professionals to use those voices. So I do ask, too, that our district leaders, that you all please remember that it is impossible for us, parents of LGBTQ youth and their advocates, to not think of worst-case scenarios when we're looking at stuff like this. We cannot see this stuff and not be hypersensitive when we see legislation through lenses of suicide risk and homelessness and drug use and hate crimes. And all of those risks exist for our kids, and kids like our kids. And we, parents, will always be thorns in the sides of any legislator, any district, any school leader, any teacher, whom we feel that kids like ours or ours are at risk. And it might seem like an unnecessary annoyance, but we do call it good trouble or civil rights advocacy. So, Mr. Turner, I am hoping that through your leadership and the dedicated work of Dr. Detweiler and the LSS team, that we will start seeing a lot of the confusion continue to get cleared up, that we will start seeing the transparency that's being asked for, because we need to have that. We need to have that transparency, not just for educators, not just for our teachers, not just for our parents, but for our kids' sake. It's important. I can't stress how important it is. Lives are at stake in a lot of these circumstances. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf.
As always, we do appreciate everyone's comments. We do take them to heart. And even though sometimes, depending upon whether my work week is fifty hours or seventy hours, I may not always get to respond to an email, but I do read them all. And I do go and start asking questions. And a lot of the questions that have been posed about Senate Bill 150, that have been posed about the new Assistant Director position for transportation, that have been posed about Panorama, that have been posed about a lot of the, I don't know, eighty or ninety-plus items that were on our agenda tonight, those have been questioned, either if by, not by me, it's by someone at this board. Because we don't take this lightly. And I've said it myself a million times, and I do agree wholeheartedly with what Ms. Wolf said. In Boone County, all does mean all when it comes to our students and our staff. And for some people, they don't like that. But we, our premise is to educate students and to prepare them for life. Whatever they come into our buildings with, we open the doors, because we are a public education system. And I think we're one of the best in the world, mainly because of the people that are in this room that you see that are staff. And so, we're going to keep working on the things we love to do, we're going to keep working on the things we don't like so much. And we will do a better job of communicating. I know there's been a lot of misunderstanding about the guidance that we rolled out, and we may tackle that a little later on. And I think that because our teachers do care so much, that they want to make sure that, number one, they do the right thing, because, again, whether we like it or not, 150 is the law. And we have to follow the law, and that's sometimes hard for the community to understand. But we take an oath to do that. And whether we like it or not, we follow the law, and then we go to work to try to change it, to make it better for kids, whatever needs to be done. And that's where our advocacy as a community comes in, for whatever law that we have that is not good for kids or not good for public education. And there's a lot of them out there that are unfunded, but we're required to do them. But I don't want, I've never had a problem with teachers coming to me and telling me what they think, because they tell me, it goes, it stays with me, I don't share names, but I take to heart what I'm told. And no teacher should live in fear about doing their job, which is to teach the students in their classroom and use their discretionary judgment, right? I mean, they have that. It's not, this Senate Bill 150 situation is no different than a thousand other situations that walk into a teacher's classroom every week. And we have great teachers. We have amazing teachers. We have amazing staff in our building, and they care about the kids. And they know that they need to provide them a safe, secure, learning environment, regardless of who they are or what they bring in with them through the front door of the building. Because there's not just the LGBTQ issues in the community. There's poverty, there's abuse, there's neglect. There's kids going home at night with nobody there and no food, and no place to sleep. And the kids that get to go to a home or an apartment are the lucky ones, because we have those that don't even have that. So, and for some reason now, our job has gone from just educating kids to being everything to kids. So if we have to be everything to kids, we've got the people that are going to do their best to make it happen, but that's going to be every child. That is our commitment, every child. So, didn't mean to get on a soapbox, but I have the microphone, and the gavel. So, point of privilege there. We can move on now to our recommended action consent agenda items A through Triple S, I believe we went through this month, after we have our recommendation from our superintendent and our treasurer's report. And yes, if you do need to leave because of school and everything like that, please feel free to go ahead and excuse yourself. We will not take offense. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I recommend the board to approve the recommended action consent agenda items A through SSS as presented with the treasurer's report given by Mrs. Linda Shield.
Okay, I have a short report tonight. We began with an adjusted cash balance of forty-four million, six-hundred-eighty-three-thousand, eight-hundred-eighty-nine dollars. We had total revenues approaching seven-point-six million, and total expenditures just short of ten-point-two million. Our net decrease in cash for the month was two million, six-hundred-one-thousand, four-hundred-forty-six dollars. And our balance at the end of the month is forty-two million, eighty-two thousand, four-hundred-forty-three dollars. It is a very, been a very routine start to the school year. Just a couple of items that are noted. One-point-one million of occupational license taxes were collected. And you will note that the transportation expenses may look a little higher when you're comparing to last year, but that is because we paid for some new buses that were delivered early this year. Our debt service payments for the month were three-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand. And I will, I've provided the usual reports, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, I have a recommendation. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the recommendation? Motion, Dr. Brown, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Parks. Any questions for Mrs. Shield on the treasurer's report or for any items on the consent agenda?
I have a couple consent agenda questions.
Okay, Mrs. Wolf.
We have items Double V and Double W. They are two ESER contracts. I noticed on the board memo that there were no notes on future funding for those two items. Do we have plans for future funding for those two items? Because those look like they were renewable contracts.
We discussed that in the Budget Committee when these came forward, because of the fact that ESER was, is being used for this and has been for the KENVO last year, correct? So that was my question to Dr. Detweiler. What's Plan B when ESER goes away?
KENVO was not going to be funded at all, but because we have ESER monies left over, staff members, leaders were able to make requests. This is a tool that is very much needed, like anything, and we discussed this in the Budget Meeting. We will have to make choices moving forward. So is there a funding source for the following year? No, not yet, there is not. So as we go through our purchasing cycle, we're making some changes. Mr. McCarter, I have working on some ideas on how we can do that. But to answer your question, there is no current plan for that. We will have to just prioritize moving forward.
Anything else, Ms. Wolf, or any follow-up to that?
No, I just wanted to see if there was any future funding for that particular item. And I did have a person email me, and I just wanted to verify that Item H, the bid award for the data room relocation, that was just adding the fire protection, correct? That was not in addition to...
Mr. Hayes?
Okay, that's what I thought. That's what I told the person. I just wanted to confirm that I was correct on that.
Any other questions? Ms. Young?
Yes. On Items I, 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 and G, G, G.
Sounds like a song.
Page two of both of those contracts, it says, this, the program is open only to students of Erlanger Elsmere Schools.
I, yeah, we fixed that. I caught that as well, and brought that to Mr. Turner's attention, that a contract with Boone County Schools shouldn't include all students from Erlanger Elsmere Schools. Yeah, that was just a typo on that, that, so, that is going to be dealt with. Already been changed.
Thank you for that. We did update that online through your system, so you should be able to see that now.
Can we discuss QQQ, the, well, not QQQ, the membership for that? Where is that one?
RRR.
Can we talk about Insert? Because I just want to talk again about what that is, because I might move to pull that off consent agenda to vote for that separate.
The Insert organization is a superintendent's organization, a nationwide superintendent's organization that has approximately eighty members across the country. Superintendent organizations are kept small like that, when there's a number of them, probably half a dozen different superintendent organizations that are similar, so that superintendents can gather in a smaller cadre to work together, to learn together, to learn from each other. And so, that group, we meet three times a year to sit down, and we bring in education experts, experts in other areas, anything regarding education. We sit down and we learn together, we talk a lot. There's quite a few superintendents that I know now in Georgia, in South Carolina, in New York State, in California, in Arizona, and we talk a lot about the different aspects of school. It could mean anything from activities and things that may be going on, some innovative things in the classroom. It is also some of the conversation we heard a little bit earlier tonight about how do we better serve the mental health needs of our students. And it's also looking at what are some strategic things that we can do with our buildings, with funding mechanisms. And each of those states have different funding mechanisms and different processes and things that govern schools in those areas. So it's really meaningful to learn and to work alongside of those. So at any given time, I can call someone from a different state that is doing the same job I'm doing, working through some of the same challenges our district is working through. And so that's been very beneficial. And so during those meetings, we get quite a lot accomplished, and we have quite a few people that come in and present and help teach and help us learn, because we have to make sure that we stay on top of that if we want to provide a world-class education to our students. Myself, as the lead learner in the district, I have to make sure that I'm on top of those things, and learning and trying to stay abreast of all of those things. So that's essentially what the group is. It's a professional development group for superintendents.
So is that the phone calls are, you have to pay the seven-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars to make the phone calls to the superintendents?
No, there's travel to go to those events. There's other programs they put together for the superintendents. So there's an expense to being a member of that organization, which helps them. It's a nonprofit organization. They don't seek a profit. Essentially, the dues that pay, that the superintendents and boards pay for that goes into all the activities of that organization.
And I may need to clarify with Ms. Amelung, isn't part of our superintendent's contract membership in X amount of organizations of his choosing so that this is one that Mr. Turner has elected to use within his contractual agreement?
Correct. So under Mr. Turner's contract, which I knew you were going to be looking down my way, so I pulled up, under Section Six, he is entitled to join four professional or civic organizations, and this is one of those, per his contract. And that is a standard inclusion in most superintendent contracts.
And if I remember correctly, when we first became involved with one of our former superintendents through Insert, you have to be asked to participate in this. This is not just, is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, it's by invitation only.
So, okay, so, yeah, just to throw that point out there, too. So, I mean, you can choose to pull it if you want, but he is contractually entitled to have this membership.
Mr. Turner, if I recall, too, I know in the past, we've talked about when we look at opportunities for the lead learner, one of the things that has been mentioned about this group in the past is that the sizes of the school districts are quite varying, whereas in Kentucky, I sit next to, in some of my KSB training, I sit next to schools that are, the entire district is smaller than my elementary school. So I think that's something that you've highlighted before, is that you get to speak to some of the larger districts. Is that still the case with the current membership?
Oh, absolutely, that's the case. And the group that I'm a part of currently, we have superintendents that have nearly a hundred thousand students in their school district. We also have some superintendents that have some very small school districts. We have a variety of different boards. Some of the Boards of Education in New York have thirteen members. And so it's the variety of the different school districts and the things that they work through, it's really beneficial to interact and learn about how they do things, learn about how things operate, and how that can help us here in Boone County.
I had asked a question on EE about a field trip, where I noted that it was it was checked yes, that students might be denied the opportunity due to financial reasons. Um, we're, we're trying to get clarification on that. Sometimes that form is horrendous and people check yes because they've checked yes above it and below it, not realizing that they're saying, yeah, we're gonna not let kids go for financial reasons and that's never anything that I like to hear. So, um, I think Mr. Turner reached out to the principal and we're gonna have some conversations on that to make sure if that was a valid yes, we'll figure out, you know, what, um, you know, if we need to do sponsorships or from the community or help them do a car wash or something to make sure that all students get to participate in the activities they want to participate in, so.
And if I may, that's the reason that checkbox is there, so we can be aware of needs that are at our school level and make sure that we can provide resources to try to meet those.
Any other questions on any other agenda items? All right, hearing no other questions. Uh, we do have a uh, recommendation motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries. We have no old business before the board this evening, so we will move on to our recommended action new business. Uh, first up, item A is our working budget for fiscal year twenty-four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I recommend the board to approve the recommended action new business item A, the working budget for fiscal year twenty-four as presented.
I have a recommendation. Do I have a motion? Motion, Dr. Brown, is there a second? Second, Mr. Parks. Mr. Turner?
The working budget before you is uh, very similar to the budget that the board approved earlier this year. Uh, the, the main difference has been the inclusion of the tax rate that the board levied uh, back in August. Uh, so, we're available for questions uh, from any of the board members, Mrs. Shield, Mr. McCarter, or myself.
Any questions on the working budget?
I just want to say thank you to the budget committee. That is a not easy. So, thank you to everyone who serves on that committee. I know you guys have had some hard conversations. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Parks, so.
Um, thank you, Dr. Brown. Yes, uh, Mr. Parks and I do serve on that committee and it is an extremely vocal and hard-working group. And uh, you know, kudos to Mrs. Shield and Ms. Jackson and, and the staff there for uh, all that they do to make sure we have the information that we need when we need it. Because the budget drives what we can and cannot do sadly. Any other questions on the budget? Okay, seeing none, we have a recommendation motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, item B, Mr. Turner, additional assistant director of transportation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I recommend the board to approve the recommended action new business item B, the additional assistant director of transportation position as presented.
Have a recommendation? Do I have a motion? Motion, Dr. Brown, is there a second? Second, Mrs. Young.
I would like to ask uh, Mr. McCarter to come forward and uh, give a presentation and provide more information to the board on this proposal.
All right, thank you, Mr. Turner. Um, back a few weeks ago, we brought this uh, item to the work, or to the organizational chart uh, workshop that we had uh, at our first meeting and we also discussed it at our second board workshop as well. Um, and so, looking at just some of the items that I have before you, we also included this at our budget committee meeting last week um, and was unanimously uh, supported by that committee to bring before the board. Um, what we are trying to do, as you know, Nick has become our new director with the retirement of Mr. Barricks. And so, we are at presently, like I mentioned before, we are working on replacing Nick's job, which is the assistant director. And we have been working for a few months to try to add an additional director to that working group. Um, just for multiple reasons that we will, I will go through the slides, which I presented to you before, but we will go back over them. And I know one of the questions, one of the main questions asked at our last organizational chart meeting or workshop was what would be the cost? And we discussed that in our board workshop last week. Um, the range would be, is what's before you, fifty-eight thousand, with that's zero experience, all the way up to seventy-seven thousand. That's somebody who came in with fifteen years' experience in the transportation area. Could you go to the next slide, Chad? Okay, the rationale uh, that we've come, that we have used or come before you with and that I've given you that information about is the needs have grown with um, over the years. Um, we know we have not added any additional staff in the last six years in transportation. The expansion, expansion of social programs, or special programs, excuse me, McKinny Vento, Ignite, Home Builders, Fire Science, Rise, and all the different special education, field trip, preschool, parochial schools, the daily transportation for all those areas has really put a strain on our transportation department. And you need somebody to oversee those, uh, all those hours of the day. We have a workday that probably starts at five, five-thirty in the morning and it goes till six, six-thirty at night. And there's multitude of things that happen throughout the day. Um, and it's put a big stress on the people that are in charge of that. Um, Chad, could you go to the next slide? And so, what we have, or what we are asking is to um, add this extra director, or assistant director and divvy up some of the job responsibilities. Um, and I'm gonna let Kim go over some of the op- some of the things that we have come up with as far as an operations uh, dr- uh, part of it that would be covered and then also a logistical part. So, Kim, on by each of mine.
Thank you. So, on the screen in front of you, you see some bullet points. Um, obviously, that's not all of the duties that an additional assistant director on the operations side would manage. But looking at how the transportation department is structured, you can basically split those into two main areas. But then underneath each of those areas, there's also many departments or um, many areas that they focus on. So, um, looking at the operations side, that person would take care of all of, um, as the title says, the operational pieces, looking at the training and the hiring and the recruiting, which we know is a key piece of being able to meet the needs of all students in the county. Also, a big piece of transportation is the compliance piece, making sure that our certifications, the reports that are required to be filed are done timely and correctly, as well as working with our shop. One of the things we've talked about at our board workshop, and I do believe at the budget committee as well, is just that um, the undertaking of maintaining not just our buses, but our shop also maintains the, as we call it, the white fleet, all of the district vehicles that you see out and about. And all of those vehicles are obviously necessary. Our facilities and maintenance department utilizes those. They are vital when we have snow removal and when those aren't working, that presents a problem for us as well. Um, another highlight from that operational piece would be working directly with human resources as well as working with finance, um, and participating in those beautiful snow drives. Um, so that, a lot of other things would go under operations, but those would be the main pieces of that. Chad, you can go to the next one, please. Then the other side of that is the logistical piece. So, looking at all of the requirements to make sure that we do what we can do to get our students to school. We know that that is, they can't learn if they're not there. So, the assistant director of transportation on the logistics side would be that person who's overseeing all of the individuals and all of the tasks that are required in order to get students back and forth to school. Looking at routing students, strategizing to minimize those doubles, managing the office staff, working at cross-training staff um, to be able to cover, since we know that we still experience some office staff that are driving buses. Also, being that liaison with parents and with the schools. One of the biggest pieces is that communication piece and making sure that all of our stakeholders are informed and know of the challenges that we're facing and how that impacts getting students back and forth to school. Also, again, as we talked about, um, a lot of those special programs that we've added through the years and we're very blessed in Boone County to have all those extra programs. But the other side of that is we have to get students to those programs. Looking at the addition of all of our Ignite programs, Gateway, Fire Science, to include our extended school services. We even know at, you know, the elementary school, a lot of times we think, you know, our special programs, we just think about high school. But really looking at our extended school services and what that takes to be able to transport students after school at elementary and middle is a key piece of that. Also, another huge piece of the logistical part with transportation is that collaboration with the special education department. Um, our District Four is the, the district that takes care of a lot of our special education students and those students who um, have some special transportation needs across the board. There's a lot of compliance with that, lots of reporting that's required in order for us to, to continue with funding and to be compliant. And then also just that continued work with the coordinators, um, meeting the needs of schools, assisting with um, changing routes on the, you know, on a regular basis. You know, we like to look at that as an ongoing task. We don't just assign them at the beginning of the year and leave them. And especially now with making sure that we can eliminate as many doubles as possible. So, being able to add that second assistant director and really just divide those duties would allow us to be very intentional and to be able to do what we can to address the needs of transportation.
And also, I want to mention that we are uh, very respectful of everybody in transportation and, and we agree that we need to have more aides on our buses. That was mentioned before. And we're not saying we shouldn't um, continue to hire people in that area. We do. And if there was a problem that was mentioned before, we will look into that problem. Um, but the prob- uh, our department, or the transportation department, is the largest department in the district and it never ends. It is at multiple moving parts at all times. And it takes a lot of people to work that, work through that department. Um, so, we've given you as much information as we can. Um, and we have done that again in our workshops and our budget committee and we had full backing of the bu- budget committee. Um, myself is here, um, Kim, our new director, if there are any questions.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Um, when we had the organizational meeting, I thought we, our next step was for us to discuss this next, not to pull the trigger on it right now. Um, and I don't, I think I wasn't the only one under that impression. Um, I'm not saying I don't see the need for the position, but I thought our next step was to have a more robust conversation about the transportation situation, determine if this was the logical next step or if there was another thing that we should be doing right now because of the transportation issue that we're facing. So, that's where I think I'm a little bit disconnected in terms of us being here right now with this position, pulling the trigger on it today.
Um, we, I, I, I'm gonna try to answer that for you. So, this, this conversation about the transportation um, director has gone on for quite a while, even before Mr. Barricks departed and...
Say departed, early retirement.
Early retirement.
Departed does not get a good connotation.
My apologies. And s- you know, as we learned in our organizational meeting, that there was only a few remaining recommendations that were even gonna be acted upon in that. And so, this, this is the conversation because we had to have it sooner than later to try to shore up basically um, a difficult situation with our transportation division and mechanics garage and all the things that they just spoke about. Anyway, hope that answers your... We've had the conversation quite a bit. Whether we've had it at this board meeting or in the transportation committee, uh, that's, you know, and then two meetings worth, we discussed it at the organizational meetings and, and the budget committee, which I know you don't sit on. I wish those were recorded so we could share them. But I'm, I'm with you. As far as, I wish we had more information uh, before today, but when is, yeah, we always don't have enough information.
I'm just concerned about what this might do for the morale of the bus drivers. Because y- one of the big things that we hear with our classified employees is, oh, another management position. And I have heard that when this hit the agenda. And that's a big concern. And they're concerned about pay rate and they should be. They, they want pay raises and they, they're entitled to them, they should have them. And they're seeing another management position. And I'm wondering if this is gonna hurt morale more than help the situation at this point. That's a big concern.
Again...
Has that been discussed?
Yeah, well, I'll just could tell you my opinion about that, since we're into the nuts and bolts of the conversation. The... I, I consider myself um, a friend of the bus drivers. And I've, since I've been on this board, I think we, I've lobbied and passed, been a part of passing multiple raises for the bus drivers. Since day one of my arrival here, I have advocated for the transportation staff repeatedly, almost every meeting. And there are multiple things that we need to work on. And I'm in a total agreement with the training. Um, and I was gonna go into some of the emails we got about bus repairs and not having enough money to, I, I'm, I'm, in the email, it says that we are saying there's not enough money for bus repairs. I don't believe that's true. I think that someone has mislabeled some things when they're discussing those. If there's training that needs to go on, a manager somewhere needs to institute that training. And that is the issue that we're trying to fix. One main manager cannot do this job. And when you, when you look at, I heard, I met with bus drivers at restaurants. I met with bus drivers for coffee. I met with bus drivers at, at the bus loop. And there was all types of issues. There's communication. We're not, we're not getting communicated with. They're not telling us what's going on, um, which all of that is true. And we, we demanded better communication from the district. And one of the, the big systematic thing is, is that th- this district is too large for one or two people to manage these complicated operations. I am not, absolutely not in favor of adding managerial personnel most of the time. And I think everyone in here knows that about me. In this particular case, one person cannot run the bus garage, all the logistics of repairing all the vehicles and the management of the people and still run the logistics of picking up all the children every day.
While driving the bus.
While dri- well, hopefully, the new person won't be a bus driver too. You know, in my experience has been, in my life, in operations of large dealerships, we have a service manager and a sales manager and a parts manager because one person can't manage all the phases of the game. And I think in this particular case, it is tough to swallow, for me, adding another individual that is quote-unquote manager or admin or whatever. But, once you understand the scope and you go to one of the, and I know you've been there and so, so have you all, been to the bus yard with all those buses. Just the mechanics alone, the mechanics of keeping a bus fleet moving by itself, um, is mind-boggling.
Again, while your mechanics are driving buses.
Right. And then we have all these other issues that crop up. We probably could use one whole person just to do the recruiting all the time, twenty, like twenty-four hours a day. We probably need a, a maintenance czar that's over all the repairs of all the things with combustible, combustion engines in it. We can't do all that stuff. And s- and so, and I'm with you as far as, I don't wanna, I am the most, I consider myself one of the most frugal people um, when it comes to the public dollar and public tax dollars. And I've, you know, heard from citizens on both sides of that issue all the time. And sometimes I'm not the most popular person about that. In this particular case, and I'm gonna just be quick, super frank, we're gonna be looking for another transportation director in five years if there's not some... we're gonna be looking for another Transportation Director in five years if there's not some relief for that, that position. These folks wake up early. Same with the bus drivers. If it was up to me, I'll just be honest, bus drivers would make eighty thousand or ninety thousand dollars a year starting out for day one. And so would custodians for that matter, if it was up to me. And if we had it in the budget, of course.
Yeah.
But since we don't, I don't know how we can fix the communication problem where one district isn't, doesn't really have any strings attached to the administration other than, you know, through the district coordinator and that kind of thing. It leads to some disconnect. And there's, you know, there's a lot of kind of systemic issues because of the size of the district. And whether it's fortunate or unfortunate, I, I think, in, in my humble opinion, again, just from listening to the bus drivers and reading, like the email, some of the emails said, we don't need a admin, another administrator because we need training and our bus is fixed. And I'm of the opinion that because we don't have effective management, we don't have training and our bus is fixed. So to me, it goes hand in hand. You have to have good management in order to get the training that you need, the bus aides hired, and the bus is repaired. And if you have a manager that's spread too thin, somewhere in there, there's gonna be some give where they're not gonna get that part done, whatever part that is. And there's only really one part in the morning that matters, and that's picking up, well, it's picking up Cameron Parks on time. Kidding. He's not just about her.
No, you're not.
I go for a walk after the bus comes, so I'm good with it. Anyway, so I, I think for me, and, and I, I guess I'm just telling my colleagues here, you all know me. I don't wanna add anybody. I mean, I've said that, really, been really clear about it. And some of the people in this room really could hear, care, you know, not want me to say that anymore. In this particular case, bus drivers need to make more money. Bus aides need to be, make more money.
All classified need to make more money.
All classified needs to make more money.
I think that's-
Custodians need to make more money. But that's not what's on the table tonight. What's on the table tonight is to give some support and try to help Matt and Eric and Kim and the Transportation Director, get all the things that our drivers and our bus aides are asking for in place. And they need unfortunately some assistance with that so they can make sure that they're managing this giant operation and, and more importantly, retaining the employees that we have now by doing a good job as good managers. And that's why I support adding this particular position at this time.
And I agree with the position itself. I'm concerned about the morale of the employees and the process. And, and that's why I'm saying that even though the, like a pay increase is not on the table that we're talking about that tonight, can we put it on the table to talk about that in the very near future for all classified employees? Because we're facing an issue not just with bus drivers, but with custodians, with paraeducators. And it's, we need these people.
I think if I can summer, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, please don't forget that last year we increased classified salaries with five point one million dollars.
They got a percentage increase though. That looks a little different than-
Yeah, but still, everyone's acting like we didn't do anything.
I know, but in-
And that, that bothers me. And, and I agree. I'm not saying it's, we, we don't wanna pay more. But there's some classified roles outside of Transportation and Custodians that we haven't touched at all that also need consideration. And if you wanna talk about morale, let's just get real. At that first organizational workshop with the reaction from the board over adding positions, my opinion was a dagger through the heart of the transportation leadership because they were begging for help. And this was a way that they thought we could give them help. And the whole conversation was totally negative. And to me, if that, if there was any morale damage done, it was in that meeting. And, and may, and, and I'm with Mr. Parks. The first battles I fought around here were for bus drivers and for bus routes and things along those lines. So I've tra- stayed on the Transportation Committee for so many years is because it's the heartbeat of the district. If, if those big yellow boxes aren't running, we don't have school. And if you sit in a meeting with those people and, and if you wanna take my place in a meeting sometime, just let me know, you're gonna find out the amazing people that we have dispatching those buses, routing those buses, and driving those buses and being an aide on those buses. And you'll, you'll sit and listen to Mrs. Best and Mr. McGarter talking about this driver saying, well, I finished my run. Who else needs help? It may end up at a school that's totally not out of their district. But kids need to be picked up and they go get them. And they do it day in and day out. And we need relief at the top to be able, I agree wholeheartedly with what Mr. Parks said, to be able to give relief at the bottom. The Salary Ad Hoc Working Committee is still doing its work. We've got a meeting coming up. And we're gonna, you know, tackle the next phase of that. The board, on top of the already negotiated raise, gave an additional percent raise on top of what we already had agreed to do. We gave more. So I think we've proven that if we've got it, we give it. But it, there's a big pie here. And there's a lot of areas that haven't been touched that are classified as well. And it's not saying that, I agree, if, if, if we could pay bus drivers eighty thousand dollars a year, I'd be one, you know? And I don't say that flippantly because that would be not, maybe getting close to what they're worth and what they put in. But if we don't give some relief, we're gonna lose more people at the top than we've already lost. My two cents worth.
And I just wanna add that I think my takeaway from the organizational meeting was that we would get an updated organizational chart and that this was identified as a priority need. And that this priority need, if I recall, the recommend, I guess there wasn't a recommendation per se, but that conversation said, can it get to budget? Can it get to salary? Let's get it to the board. And I think the challenge is we're looking at it as an or situation. We still have the work of the Ad Hoc Salary Committee. We still have the work of all of our committee structures, so I don't think we're negating one or the other. I think we're recog- there was discussion about cross-training certain employees and making sure that we, you know, had all of the things that we needed in place to support those systems and to refine those systems and to make them even more efficient. And I think this position was identified as the top priority need out of that conversation. So in my mind, I was absolutely anticipating that this would be at the board this month. When I walked away, that was my assumption was, can it get to budget? Can it get to salary? Yep, okay. We will see it in the board meeting. So I guess I assumed that it would absolutely be here. So I was not surprised that it wouldn't be on this particular agenda.
And in the Budget Committee, the project manager position that we discussed was always brought forward. And we said, no, let's focus on this one. That one can wait a while, but this is the critical need. About some of the other issues, I, I reached out too. And I do appreciate everyone who reached out with their opinions and whether we agree or disagree on interpretations or anything like that. I, I always appreciate people when they, they reach out and tell me how they feel because you have insight that I don't have. But I reached out to Mr. McGarter and Mrs. Best about some of the issues that were brought up that Mr. Parks alluded to about the buses not being able to be fixed. And I, I knew we had had conversations a while back that there were supply chain issues at one point that were impacting receipt of parts and things like that. And, and you can't fix something if you can't get the part to fix it. But do you wanna share more information on that so that people in the community and, and even within the district understand that we are not putting unsafe buses on the road? I mean, let's, if we're not putting unsafe buses on the road, let's make that clear.
Yeah, I think in our back and forth communication, one of the things too, we had to keep in mind that I presented to you was the cost of parts has gone up. And our Transportation Department has a budget within our budget. And when that needs to be adjusted, we rely on, we relied on Mr. Barrick's or now we rely on Mr. Gear to make it, make us aware of that so we can adjust your budget to help those situations. Also, with the safety aspect of it, our buses are inspected every two weeks and they have to. And we are known throughout the state as one of the safest districts in the, in the, in the entire state. And our garage has always been up to a high level, always since I've been here. And that's a kudos to our group, people in our garage and the people that work there and, and go to work and manage it every day. I, I don't know what else to say about the safety records. We are, we, our safety audits have been clean and they've never been questioned. So I don't know what else to say to emphasize how safe they are. We would not put an unsafe bus on the road to jeopardize anybody. Yes, we do have problems with, some of our mechanics are driving because we have a lack of drivers. And that does pull them away from the shop at times. And we have some of the people in our office that drive some of them every day because of, we have a lack of drivers. We do have double runs and we're trying to address that. I know that was brought up earlier, which I appreciate that. And we made, we were transparent about that before school even started, that we had eighteen dedicated double runs to start the year off. And we're trying to do the best job we can with that. I know that frustrates people. And we also combat road construction. There's construction going on in Frog Town Road, which is, that's where a lot of traffic comes in the morning. The Ryle Campus is very crowded. And I know people get frustrated with that. But we're trying our best. And I know Nick has done a great job just as the Assistant Director and he will do a great job as the Director. And really, all the people at Transportation are working very, very hard. And you guys see that at our Transportation Committee meetings. They are wonderful people. And our bus aides and everybody associated with it. So I don't know what else to say to make people understand that we are trying our best, we're safe, and we're trying to do the best we can to get kids to and from school in a very difficult situation.
So what is the avenue for a driver that has expressed concern about bus repairs needing to be done? What do they do?
Well, I would say, I would, I don't know if Nick, if you wanna answer that question as far as if they have a, something wrong with their bus, it obviously comes to the garage and if you wanna-
Garage. I mean, they can see their coordinator, they can see myself. And our garage foreman, I'll say Jimmy Joe, he's right there at the window when they turn it in too. So he hears them all and he's aware of them.
And if you've ever visited our garage at all, it's constant motion. They are working on buses, they're inspecting buses, they're taking tickets that Nick just described to go fix that bus. They may need to go get a spare bus. Obviously, we have twenty-four drivers who are short. So we do have some spare buses that we can pull in and go onto that route while the bus gets fixed. Cause some of them, some of them need more repairs than others. It may take more time. So it's an ongoing process every day of what's going on over there. I don't know if that answers your question, but-
It does. I just, I just wanna make sure that any drivers who have concerns over bus repairs or bus safety or concern that, that they know that there's an avenue to get that addressed.
I, I can't believe that they would not know that there's an avenue because I know Nick is very vocal as far as communication. And our routers or dispatchers are all very helpful as well. If there's a problem on the bus or if a bus would happen to break down, we will go out and get that bus and bring a spare bus to transport children if we have to to another bus. So it's constantly, I, I've, I hear it on the, only reason I can tell you that is because I have a radio that I hear all the back and forth. And I know those jobs are getting done.
Well, in the spirit of communication, let's just make sure we can, re-communicate that process so that if, if, if a driver does have a concern, that they feel comfortable and confident in bringing it forward and that they will be heard.
Okay. Fair enough.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanna follow up with something. You, you can sit down if you want.
Thank you.
I think, I just, I wanted to just sort of clear up something I said. So in talking with, over the, my term here on this board and talking with people, there's been a sense that the transportation, the management in the Transportation Department has had trouble communicating or addressing bus driver needs. Like the things we just mentioned, bus repairs, training, whatever it is. My hope and understanding and sort of desire is that, from what I can understand and the reason I'm supporting it, like I said earlier, is that the management team is spread too thin. So I, I would like to see in a, in a school year, some of the complaints of bus drivers and bus aides alleviated by more management, more direct management and active management and listening to the bus drivers in all the districts. And having these needs that are brought up addressed and, cause no one's asked me for driver aid training. I don't know if they've ever asked you.
No, I don't recall.
So if, if I was giving the option, I would support that if it was on an agenda. No one's ever asked me for more money to repair a bus other than the budget that Linda and her team put together. If they did, I would be in favor of buying more parts or whatever it is. They've asked us to help with the management. And so that's what I'm supporting and I'm with you that there's a lot of work to be done to pay more people, pay people more in this district. And I, I hope the Ad Hoc Committee continues to work on that. But anyway, I'll leave it at that.
And just remember, that's why we have the Transportation Committee. It, it's, it's a Concerns Committee, it's an informational committee, and it has elected representatives from every Transportation District in Boone County. So they are your elected liaisons to that committee. And their purpose is to bring the voice of the Transportation Department and not just the Transportation Department, but to me, it's, it's, it's the whole classified. We, we call it transportation because as Mr. McGarter said, transportation is the larg- largest department within the district as far as, as moving parts. But that's what those people are elected there to do, is to bring those concerns forward. Charlie Buffano sits on that committee. He is your Classified Association President. He brings concerns for aides and custodians and transportation employees and classified staff across the district. We're not limited to transportation, so there's, you, you can talk to your own district representatives and have them bring it for you if you feel like it's not being heard. And trust me, in that committee, we address it. We'll figure it out. We'll, we'll send back, you know, recommendations to get it done. So there are, there are avenues out there and you can always continue to reach out to the board too as well. That's what we're here for too. And Mr. Parks and I sit on that committee too. And we can bring those issues forward. It's not like we haven't done it before and can continue to do it. So there are avenues. Use them. Because we can't get better if we don't know the right information to, to work on and approach. So are there any other questions?
Madam Chair, may I comment?
Yes, please.
Um, well, I am student representative, so I wanna bring in the student perspective of this matter. I know, I'm not gonna try to fool you guys saying I'm a, a financial budgeting whiz, cause I'm not. I don't really understand how this works at the district level and I- And I personally do not know many of the bus drivers or bus personnel, except for my own bus driver who safely takes me back and forth from school every day for the past three years. But I do want to add that, as I mentioned before, the bus problem is the biggest problem. My peers, as a student rep, have mentioned to me that they want to see that fixed. That is the biggest issue with double runs, triple runs, them having to wait outside, them being unsure if they're going to arrive on class on time. And of course, there's the multitude of other different needs that the bus staff fulfills, as in field trips, all the extracurriculars, any sort of special education that occurs outside of the main school. And I feel that, and changing a little bit up, spicing it up in the administration level by adding this position would alleviate for Mr. Greer, the new, new director. Because I was there when Mr. Barrick's was present last year. As part of SSAC, I was privileged to be able to go to the garage and see how it worked. And I can affirm that it's a very, very movable and locomotive area, that no one ever stops working. It's, it's, it's constant. And so I feel that this position would really alleviate some of the stress that they're going through right now, especially with concerns from students and parents in all parts of this district. And that this alleviation of stress will hopefully trickle down to the student level. It might not be an immediate change, but hopefully it'll be an exponential benefit to this, to this district if there's changes in the administrative leadership of the Transportation Department. I don't want to say that this is the only answer we have. There's plenty of great minds here in this district who can maybe think of better solutions. But as of now, with the information given to me, I do want to say that I believe students will be really happy to hear that there are changes going on that are assuring that he can safely and efficiently get to school every day.
Thank you, Yusef. Appreciate your perspective.
I think something that might help with the communication side is to make sure that we're communicating this as a piece of the solution, not the entire solution. And so our bus drivers realize that we're not throwing this at them as the solution to take care of the problem of our shortages and our double runs. This is a part of it. Because I think that when this is probably going to pass, I think it's going to be looked at by some as, oh, they're throwing a management position at us. It could and it will, of some bus drivers have a morale issue. But if we're communicating it well, they'll know that this is a piece of it and that we're not giving up on the recruitment. And we're not giving up on fixing the actual problem. And we see the salary issues and we're still trying to do all of the other pieces, that this isn't the big solution. I think that's where the miscommunication will come from, if we're not out in front of it.
And Transportation meets next week? So we can continue this discussion there as well? But, good point, I agree. Anything else? Okay, hearing nothing else, we have a recommendation motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You're no, okay, so it does pass with one no vote? It was just one no vote, right? Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure the record's correct. So we will move forward with posting that position, I assume, Mr. Turner, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And good luck, Mr. Greer. Item C, dual litigation, the Altria settlement, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I recommend the board to approve the recommended action due business item C, dual litigation, the Altria settlement as presented.
Have a recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion, Mrs. Young, is there a second? It's a tie, I'll give it to Mrs. Wolf. Any other additional details you want to share, Mr. Turner?
Yes, just very briefly, this is a settlement to the law street that the, the board agreed to be a part of with Altria for the dual litigation. And just a few details here, Boone County Schools is eligible to receive a gross offer of a hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars as part of that settlement. Subtracted from that unfortunately, we don't know the amount, would be attorney's fees and some court expenses, et cetera. In addition, there may be some liens on settlement funds. So it may take a little bit of time to see that money actually. This was a several, several years of litigation. The board can choose to reject the settlement offer as well if they wish. Essentially, we would stay on with the ongoing court case in the system. That would be a delay. That could mean that the, the settlement after a period of time could be less, depending on how other settlements go and how long the case continues. But as of right now, it's on the table for just under a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And the board stated they, if there was money coming from that, it would be for mental health services and, and awareness around our school district and our community.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. Any questions? Okay, with our recommendation motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. With our added item D is our memorandum of understanding between Head Start and Boone County Preschool.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I recommend the board to approve the recommended action due business item D, the local area agreement and utilization for Head Start and preschool as presented.
Have a recommendation, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Parks, is there a second? Second, Mrs. Young, thank you. Any Dr. Shires?
Yes, Dr. Shires.
Who's going to be addressing this?
We'll ask him to come forward and just share details on this local area agreement. This is required by KDE each year for every school, preschool in the state.
It is, it's required by Kentucky Department of Education to have a local area agreement between Head Start and preschool programs. We work closely with Head Start, it just defines the responsibilities for preschool and Head Start. That's what it does.
And we've been doing this for a lot of years.
Yes, we have.
Any questions for Dr. Shires or anyone? Okay, with our recommendation motion in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. That brings us to our information proposals and communications. Does any board member have anything they wish to bring forward?
I would like to make a suggestion. Every year we do a financial audit. And every year we have more and more data that we use, more and more computer programs, computer systems. I'd like to explore the probability of doing a yearly audit on our, our security systems for our data, our computer data. I think that we need to be responsible on that and proactive. I don't, I'm not a technical person, so I don't know all the language on that. But I think that that's something that would help our communities peace of mind with a lot of the stuff that we're doing, especially with more and more things being computer-based. And I know the VA does a lot of computer-based stuff itself and they do a lot of annual audits. So I think that that's something that a school district our size, and especially with as many computer systems as we're looking at, especially with something like Panorama, having something like a yearly audit would be in our best interest.
Yeah, ironic you should mention that. We've been discussing, Mrs. Rankin's out of town this week. But when she gets back, we've talked about having kind of a preliminary meeting to look at all of these contracts that we do for that very reason. Because more and more, we're using programming that does touch data. And there's a lot of things that we have to do by law that protects that. A lot of the contractual language has the information on data privacy and security. Some language is better than others. And, you know, frankly, that's one of the reasons Panorama was pulled, is that there was some language that we needed to do a deeper dive into to make sure that the district is protected and our student and, and teacher data is protected. So we're, we're kind of working on cleaning up some of those processes. And I think that that's definitely something that could be brought forward to, in that conversation with Mary Ann when she gets back, on how would we create a procedure for that.
Now, there's got to be something in other school districts, larger school districts, they have to have somebody who already does this, that uses a very good reputable third-party auditing company.
It's a very good point. And the number of software platforms has just accelerated over the last three to four years, much more than it, than it was prior. So that's presented its own set of challenges. So I, I agree with you completely on, on this idea.
Anyone have anything else?
I just, I wanted to just remind the board that Mrs. Young brought up last, I think it was the last meeting about maternity leave. And so I was wondering if we, if, I guess not wondering, no, no, no answer needed right now, but I'm looking forward to the proposed changes for our maternity leave policy that may come before the board soon.
Yeah, let me give you a brief update. I'm glad you, you mentioned that. We had some discussions with Mr. McCarter, Mr. Ball and myself, legal counsel as well, as there is state law that does govern part of that. So we've, we've started the conversations, we have more work to do. But we can certainly give a report at our next meeting and just to give you an idea of where we are and what might be some next steps.
The other thing that is on my mind is, I would appreciate if at some point, maybe now, with just a verbal exception, that our board reaffirms our commitment to preschool education. I would like to know that we all agree that it's important and it deserves our attention on occasion. And that we all understand that it's a vital part of our school district here in Boone County.
It's a gateway to Boone County schools. It needs to be treated that way.
You won't get any argument from me. I, I want us back in a preschool education academic center.
I'm with you.
I want it out of the buildings, I want it concentrated back into a designated spot so that the great work that was begun in that environment can continue. Because of how critical it is that by a child reaches kindergarten, they're ready for school. And it used to not be that way. You used to say, you used to go to kindergarten to get ready for school. But now that's not the way it works anymore because our world just moves too fast. But yeah, my support for that has not wavered at all.
And I do think that our legislative committee actually needs to meet at some point this year. And that should be a top priority. Mr. Turner?
When, when, who is the chair of the legislative committee? I know it used to be Dr. Ford, I think.
No, that's myself.
Ford, I'm sorry.
That's myself.
Oh, it is you, okay.
Yeah, well, you're the committee, so it's up to you. And remember full-day kindergarten funding in that as well, because that's as important as preschool.
Right.
Anyone on that end, anything to bring forward?
No, I just support the, what Jesse, what Mr. Park said about preschool.
All right.
All for it.
This is my-
My son went to Boone County Preschool and it did have a world of good with his speech, so.
Agreed.
Very supportive of it. And where they are right now is not where they need to be. It's over there. I'd like to see them moved. The, the, the welcome center and the eval center need to be moved.
Okay. All right. Well, we talk about, I mean, we talk about what's important, so.
I, I will say quickly, one of the things that I think about quite often when we go to these KSBA trainings, that they often say that boards of education, you know, sort of produce the vision of the district. And it's been hard for me to understand how that works. Because when I come in, the contracts are already on the docket, you know, and some, someone a lot brighter than me thought about the plan. And so I, I appreciate everyone just at least verbalizing on, on occasion, whatever the thing might be, our commitment in this particular conversation to preschool and we might have other things later. But it, it, it's always one of the, you present the vision. And I'm like, I don't know when that happens. Is there a vision meeting? I mean, what's, so I appreciate it.
September fourteenth, you just contributed to the vision.
Right.
This is true, this is true. KSBA is having a board of directors meeting, our quarterly board meeting next weekend, so I'll be in Frankfurt for that. We are actually doing our work session a little bit different. We have one of our state legislators coming to meet with us. KSBA is currently putting together our advocacy program for the upcoming, coming General Assembly. And one of the things that we heard back, and thank you all for attending the regional meeting, Northern Kentucky is always a very special one, that, you know, funding is always an issue. Funding for full-day kindergarten is, has been discussed a lot by input for KSBA advocacy. Also, there's a lot of conversation tied to funding of looking, what are the benefits or potential non-benefits of changing funding and seek from ADA to ADM? So that's going to be part of the focus of our conversation with our legislator when they join us next Friday afternoon. I've seen both sides, it could be helpful or hurtful. So for our gurus in the room that live our numbers and data and statistics, I would be interested in, I've seen some numbers from KSBA on how ADA, a change from ADA to ADM would impact Boone County. So if anyone has any insight into those numbers before I head to Frankfurt next weekend, I'd appreciate it. And any other concerns like, I bring up preschool, I bring up full-day funding for kindergarten. I bring up non-partisan races for school board members, which as you all saw was one of the most overwhelmingly responded to question by school board members across the state that, it was like, what, ninety-something percent? I can't remember, it was a huge number against partisan races for school boards. And the General Assembly is not the largest selected body. School board members are the largest, largest selected body in Kentucky. So we have a lot of power in our seats from a, an elected body. And we need to get better about using it to advocate for, for students and public education and those who provide it. Because if we don't do it, it doesn't get done. So any thoughts or along those lines that anyone wants to send to me as we prepare for our KSBA meeting next week, please send it my way. And I want to congratulate our Kentucky teachers for being finalists and actually winning awards. I want to thank everyone in this room and watching or who's already gone to bed to get up in the morning to go back into the classroom. Thank you for getting us off to such a great start this year. I watch every day for our message saying, "All kids delivered home." And I know that that's when everyone can breathe a sigh of relief. So thank you for all that you do. Thank you for your dedication and your care, whatever your role is. You're all vitally important to our success and we do know that, acknowledge that, and thank you for that. So if there is nothing else that anyone wishes to bring up, we have no closed session tonight, so all I would need would be a motion to adjourn. Motion, Mrs. Wolf, is there a second? Second, Mrs. Young, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you all very much, have a good evening. Call to order the Finance Corporation of the Boone County Board of Education. Please, let the record show, all members are still present.